So have you checked out the Sherman Oaks Castle Park lately? What's your favorite part? The arcade? The pizza? The miniature golf? Wait, what? Okay, you're just like me. You've never heard of Sherman Oaks Castle Park. Well, Saeda Pagan is here to tell you all about it.
Welcome to Sherman Oaks Castle Park. It's a place where you can play 18 holes of miniature golf, get in some serious batting practice, and relax with your favorite arcade games.
If you want to come here Friday after picking up the kids from school or spending a Saturday, Sunday afternoon or even in the evening for some of the younger adults that want to have date night, they can do that here.
This delightful venue is located in the heart of the San Fernando Valley. It is operated by the Los Angeles Recreation and Parks Department with support from private vendors.
I like it. I like all the new stuff. Every time I come in, something's always updated. It's pretty cool.
The castle park's main attraction is miniature golf. There are three amazing courses with resurfacing currently going on. Besides golf, the park is great for parties of any size. There are several outdoor seating areas for all kinds of celebrations. And of course, let's not forget these cool batting cages designed for different skill levels. For many families, the Sherman Oaks Castle Park is a great alternative to a crowded and costly theme park. A round of golf is only $6.50 here, and parking is absolutely free. This park is go-to family entertainment for many.
I really enjoy coming here, playing at the golf course. My daughter loves it too, and we come a lot with our family. And we just love it.
Four-year-old Mildred explained why she likes coming here.
Because it's amazing.
If miniature golf isn't your thing, then maybe you'll like the park's arcade. There are enough games to suit anyone. We decided to have some fun and try our hand at this arcade racing game and had a blast. And if you earn enough winning points, there are some really great gifts. Does that pizza look good? The staff members at the Park's Cafe are happy to serve you. They have anything from snacks to full catering. The hope is that more people will discover this hidden gem and find out just how brightly it truly shines.
Being in L.A., you people want to go to Hollywood or they want to go to the beach, all these big places, Santa Monica. And so sometimes we may not look as big like that to a lot of the tourists, but to the locals, this is a great place to come over and kind of get away from all of that.
The Sherman Oaks Castle Park makes visiting easy. It is open seven days a week and operates until about 11:00 on most nights.
It's a 30-year-old traveling piece of history. Its purpose used to be to divide, but it has since become a symbol of unity. Anna Marcos reports on the new installation at the historic Paseo Walkway, a wall against walls.
A piece of the past is going up at the El Pueblo Historical Monument, a 12-foot-high chunk of rock that reminds us that walls divide us. For almost 30 years, this section of wall did just that, separating East and West Germany. The Berlin Wall came down piece by piece in 1989 as protesters used pickaxes, chisels, and weapons to destroy it. Not many pieces are left, but this section, a part of the Wall Against Walls exhibit, has made it from Berlin to La Placita, a wall still relevant in today's times.
The fact that it is a wall resonates, I think, with the Latino community today.
This wall stood separating the city of Berlin for almost 30 years. Okay, separated families, separated people from freedom. And the same thing is happening at the border right now.
The 3-ton piece of concrete got to L.A. by way of the White House. It was a present from Berlin citizens to the U.S. to mark the 30th anniversary in November of the wall's destruction. And it was a comment on Donald Trump's own present-day border wall.
The message here from the people of Berlin is urging our president and our administration to build a world without walls. Okay, they know what it's like to be walled off.
Once we tried to deliver this wall and the letter with it to the White House, and it was rejected, we immediately realized that this is not for the president as much as it is for the American people. So what we started is we started to travel across the country. People were fascinated by it, and people were talking about it, and it created dialogue.
The wall monolith has reached the end of its journey and now stands near a sculpture of a wooden coyote or coyote at El Pueblo, an immigrant-inspired creation by a Mexican artist.
He's created nine of these coyotes that are spread throughout Mexico and guide migrants to their path to the border.
Immigrants whose families have been separated by the wall on our southern border will get a chance to have their names inscribed on the back of this piece of wall and become part of its legacy.
I don't think there should be that division because at the end, we're all the same. And America was built in immigrants. So I think it's just important to remind us of that.
The Wall Against Walls exhibit will have a semi-permanent spot at El Pueblo Historical Monument. It will be here for at least six months.
We go from a 2.7-ton concrete slab of famous history to a lesser-known oral history. The group was nicknamed Six Triple Eight. They were the only all-black, all-female battalion overseas during World War II. And seeing that it's African-American Heritage Month, now seems like a great time to hear their stories and thank them for their service.
This presentation is going to focus on the 6,888th Central Postal Directory Battalion, the only all-African-American Women's Army Corps regiment to be deployed overseas during World War II. They were brought in to sort a huge backlog of mail in the millions of pieces. The Army frankly didn't know how to do it because the troops were moving across Europe so fast that they weren't able to keep up and deliver the mail from the soldiers' families.
When we give these presentations, a lot of people come up and didn't know, especially the younger folks, like, "We didn't know anything about these women." You know, we're inspired. In a time when there was no civil rights for women and also for African-Americans, they were able to accomplish something great.
I learned about this subject later, maybe a couple decades ago, but I didn't know much. But with Alva Stevenson, she showed me some of the information and told me about her mother was in this unit. And it was like, wow! You know, and knowing somebody who their parent was actually in, because you just don't hear this information.
Most important thing, I think, is just to recognize that there were African-American women who were actually serving their country. And I was disappointed that the history books never told their story, but at the same time, I'm so proud of them, and I'm proud to pass the story on.
In our feature this week, we welcome two accomplished team members from the USC Alzheimer's Disease Research Center. Saeda Pagan sat down with Dr. John Ringman and Dr. Jennifer Leo to discuss what to expect as you're aging.
According to the U.S. Census Bureau, every day, 10,000 Americans are turning 65 years of age. So the topic of mental aging is relevant to all of us. We recently sat down with two researchers to find out what we can do to delay the onset of mental decline.
With normal aging, there is a slowing down of neurons, the speed at which they can communicate. But also, overall, you tend to lose those cells with age. So there is an overall shrinkage of the brain that occurs, especially in more advanced age.
Now, a lot of us in the public are a little confused about the difference between dementia and Alzheimer's.
Dementia is just a general term that refers to a cognitive problem that affects your ability to do your everyday activities, like managing your money or remembering to take your medications. There's a lot of different causes of dementia, but the most common cause is something called Alzheimer's disease, which refers to specific disease which is caused by the buildup of two proteins in the brain. One protein is called amyloid, and one protein is called tau. And over time, as these proteins accumulate, they injure nerve cells, and that causes symptoms, which usually start first with short-term memory loss and over time progress to affect other parts of cognition and ultimately your ability to take care of yourself.
I think a lot of people are wondering, well, when is it going to start happening? So let's talk about the age. I know it can happen at a very early age. Doctor?
Just this morning, I was seeing a patient that started getting symptoms at age 23. It's luckily a very rare form of Alzheimer's disease.
Your risk for developing Alzheimer's disease goes up significantly after you hit about 80 or 85. So the risk for someone who's between 65 and 75 of developing Alzheimer's disease is about 1 in 250. But the risk of someone who's over 85 of developing Alzheimer's disease in the next year is about 1 in 13.
So that leads us to the question, what can we do to perhaps either prevent it or delay it?
We think that everything that's good for the heart is good for the brain as well. So we encourage everybody to exercise. It helps get your blood pumping and helps your brain get enough of the blood that it needs. A generally healthy diet, in particular a Mediterranean-style diet, has evidence for preventing or slowing cognitive symptoms. And then taking care of the same risk factors that can cause heart disease. So if you have high blood pressure, making sure you're working with your primary care doctor to have it well-controlled. If you have diabetes, same thing, working with your primary care doctor to make sure it's really, really under good control.
Good luck with the wonderful research that you're doing.
A Cookie Convention puts on a sweet show. A Place Called Home puts on a music festival. And it's Music Video Night at the Annenberg. All this in Things to Do.
Don't miss the 2020 L.A. Cookie Convention and Sweet Show. This event is the biggest baking, pastry, and sweets convention on the West Coast. Indulge your love for all things sweet, salty, and savory in the world of baking and sweets. You'll even get to meet celebrity chefs. The 2020 L.A. Cookie Convention happens Saturday, February 29, beginning at 10:00 a.m. For more information, visit their listing on Gold Star. Artists in Motion present the American Youth Symphony Festival. Together in conjunction with A Place Called Home, AIM is putting together on a fun, family, musical event. It's all in an effort to present South Central's underserved youth with a gift of music. The American Youth Symphony Festival will take place Saturday, February 29. For more information, visit artistsinmotion.la.org. Be sure to check out Hollywood Calling, Music Video Night featuring Quinn Wilson. This music video series was launched in conjunction with mass appeal to celebrate creatives through the lens of video. Now, this groundbreaking series is coming to the Annenberg Space for Photography. Don't miss Hollywood Calling. Music Video Night, happening Saturday, February 29, beginning at 7:00 p.m. To claim your free tickets, visit their listing on Eventbrite. And that's a look at some things to do.
That's it for this edition. I'm Rasha Gual from all of us here at L.A. This Week. Thanks for joining. And a reminder that you can catch us online at LACityview.org. We're also available on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more L.A. This Week.
Good morning. Good morning and welcome to your Los Angeles City Council. Today is Wednesday, February 26th, and this council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. Madam Clerk, we have a quorum. Please call the roll.
Blumenfeld, Pan, and Biscayna, Sadio, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Corretts, Krikorian, Lee Martinez, Oferel, Price, Rodriguez, Rue Wesson. Ten members present and a quorum. Madam President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Sadio moves and Mr. Harris Dawson seconds next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Price moves and Mr. Oferel seconds. Members, let's go through the agenda. Madam Clerk, go ahead.
Madam President, there is a request to continue Item 10 to March 3rd.
Okay, without objection, that will be the order next.
Items 1 through 22 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Members, are there any specials on these items? Mr. Corretts?
I'd like to call 3 through 5 special.
Any other specials, members? Okay, let's go ahead and vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, what's next?
And Madam President, for the record, the ordinance for Item 2 will be carried over one week to March 4th.
Okay, very well.
That then takes council to Items 23 and 24, which are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are not before us. Are there any cards on any of these items?
Yes, there are cards on both items.
Okay, let's go ahead and hold that. What's next?
On the continuation agenda, Item 25 is an item for which a public hearing has been held.
Anyone want to call a special? Okay, CNN, let's go ahead and vote on...
Excuse me, Madam President.
Mr. Blumenfeld?
Can I call number 25 special for an amendment?
For an amendment?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's move on.
Madam President, that then takes council back to presentations. Items called special or general public comment.
Okay, Mr. ... Okay, Madam Clerk, there's been a request to send Item 24 with... Mr. Harris Dawson, are you ready for your presentation, sir?
Come on Sylvia. All right, good morning, everybody. It's another great day in the city of Los Angeles as we continue our celebration of African-American Heritage Month. Today, we have our annual celebration and recognition of historically black colleges and universities. You see out in the rotunda the flags and pendants of various schools. These universities and institutions are very important to the African-American struggle and very important to the city of Los Angeles. Folks may know that before the fall of slavery and the fall of apartheid in the United States, progressive whites and ambitious African-Americans set up colleges and universities so that their children could matriculate through and get college degrees and master's degrees and pursue excellence in a variety of skills, even though the mainstream universities in the country didn't allow that. Those colleges were formally recognized in 1964 in the Civil Rights Act of that year, and they continue to this day to educate a disproportionate number of African-American professionals. So, half of African-American doctors and half of them African-American lawyers, half of African-American engineers actually did their undergraduate work at a historically black college or university. Three of the African-Americans who've served on this Los Angeles City Council, including myself, Council President Emeritus Wesson, and our recently and dearly departed Rita Walters are all alumni of historically black colleges and universities. In all of our city departments, and let me make sure I get the number right, so in our city staff, there are 28 city departments, 24 of them have alumni of historically black colleges and universities working in them today. And today, in sort of recognition of this work, Councilman Blumenfeld and I submitted a motion that will extend the outreach for the city STEM internship program in the summer from just local colleges and universities to HBCUs in the south and around the country. That's very, very important because at many of these schools, after the city that the school is in, so my college was in Atlanta, so most students, the biggest number of students were from Atlanta, but after that, the largest group of students were from Los Angeles. And so, it's important that we recognize them as a city. We have today two honorees that we want to recognize. The first is to my right, a Howard Bison. She holds a Bachelor in Fine Arts, our own Wendy Raquel Robinson. Let's give her a big round of applause. We know her from the Steve Harvey Show from 96 to 2002. She also played... We know her from the Steve Harvey Show. She also played on The Game on BET. She is the co-founder of the Amazing Grace Conservatory, which started in 1997, a nonprofit organization and NAACP award-winning program in South LA focused on performing arts, training in acting and dance, voice and digital media arts for youth from the ages of five to 18. And if you've ever had the opportunity to see these young men and women perform at a very early age, you can see that this is some of the best training that you can get anywhere. Just last week, Ms. Robinson was honored by the County Board of Supervisors for African-American Heritage Month, so you're on a roll. Your time has come. But she's been a big champion and real important to us in Council District 8. Last year, you all know, when we lost the beloved Nipsey Hussle, we put a number of folks came and stepped up and offered programming so that people had something and a place to put their energy and their grief. And Ms. Robinson stepped up to help us with an entrepreneurial program for young people as well as something in the digital and media arts. And so, today, we want to commend you for your gift to the city of Los Angeles as an HBCU alumni, even if it is Howard University. Our own Wendy Raquel Robinson, ladies and gentlemen.
Good morning, good morning. Thank you so much for your kind words. I'm also, I'm a Los Angelinian. I've been here for, born and raised, actually, but I want to say something to you, Council Member Markeith Harris Dawson. My brother, you are so awesome, all the way from Crenshaw to Swanson. Okay, I got to put a couple of bars together because I understand he's a DJ, but I'm so honored to receive this honor. It means so much to me. As a graduate of Howard University, it really changed the trajectory of my life. I don't know where I would be without a university of professors that looked like me, being surrounded by my peers that, you know, still work with me and carry on this legacy. So, I received this honor. Thank you so much. I'm going to continue the work. Please support us at Amazing Grace Conservatory. We've been around for 23 years. We've touched over 7,000 lives, and without Amazing Grace Conservatory, we would not be, I mean, well, Howard University, we would not be. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. One more round of applause from Ms. Wendy. Our second honoree is our own. Many folks don't know that here in the city of Los Angeles, we actually have a historically black college or university. It's our own Charles Drew University there in the Watts-Willbrook area. Charles Drew is committed to cultivating diverse health professional leaders who are dedicated to social justice and health equity for underserved populations through research, clinical services, and community engagement. The university was founded in 1996 after a report by the Mccone Commission that came after the civil unrest in 1965 in Watts. Violence in the city and end to the beginning authored by Governor Etmen G. Brown. It cited poor health and diminished access to quality educational opportunities, healthcare, employment, and safety as a key factors to sparking that riot. One of the things that the state did is cede Martin Luther King Hospital, and alongside Martin Luther King Hospital, we ceded Charles Drew University. Now, Charles Drew graduates pursue careers in various fields, including primary care, family medicine, internal medicine, OB-GYN, and pediatrics. I'd like to highlight that in 2018, after some years of struggle, the university announced the return of its residency training to the community for the first time in 11 years. And so, we're training new physicians at CDU again. And just last year, CDU's match day, of all students matched, 70% were chosen to complete their residencies in California. 60% remained in Southern California, and nearly half stayed in Los Angeles County. And so, when we're looking for providers of color, we count on Charles Drew University to make sure that those people are trained and ready to go in our community. We have a shortage of physicians in South LA to this day, and so, we lift up Charles Drew University. Charles Drew also has the distinction of being one of the only institutions in the country, I think the only institution in the country, that is a Latino-serving institution and an HBCU, with at least 25% of its student body being Latino and from Southern California. The university is named for Charles R. Drew, and if you ask medical experts, they have a complicated explanation. If you Google it, if you Google "who discovered blood plasma," it'll say Charles Drew. So, the councilman is going to say that Charles R. Drew discovered blood plasma. He helped out with the British Army and eventually worked here in the United States and quit when our medical facility said, "Black people can donate blood, but it can't be mixed with blood from white people." And Charles Drew was a scientist, and so, he knew that this was poppycock, to use a medical term. And so, he quit in protest, and we're very proud today and honored to be joined by a special assistant to the president of Charles Drew University, but also a local icon and a local hero to us all, the daughter of Charles R. Drew, Sylvia Drew Idy.
Thank you so much for having us and for highlighting the wonderful work of Charles Drew University. Councilwoman, I just have to correct you on the plasma issue, just very briefly. Plasma is the yellow cells in the blood, the red blood cells, or the hemoglobin, and the plasma is very, very important to life because if you don't have time to match the blood type of the red blood cells, you could get plasma and it can save your life. So, my father was asked to collect blood, spin it down, separate the yellow and the red, and send it to England and France in World War II, even before we got in. When we got into World War II, the Red Cross appointed my father as the head of the Red Cross Blood Bank to collect blood and make it available in wartime. The methodology that he developed is still the methodology used today for blood transfusion. So, he was a scientist, and he was a very strong organizer of mobilization in a time of crisis. So, that's why the university is named for him and his leadership and his dedication to equality. He had to fight racism and not wanting to collect blood from blacks. He had to fight racism and not want to... He had to fight racism and not wanting to have it labeled by race. And he was a champion even while he was serving us all. CDU today educates doctors, nurses, PAs, and undergraduates in health. And we have 1,000 students. Two-thirds of those students are women. So, women are very, very welcome in our environment. And we are 40% black, 30% Latino, and 10% API. So, we're the second most diverse undergraduate college in the nation because of that. But the leadership was African-American. The leadership continues to be African-American, and we want everyone at our educational table. So, thank you so much for having us. Thank you, Councilwoman.
So, on behalf of the City Council of your great city of Los Angeles, we want to present to Charles Drew University here this token of recognition for HBCU Day in our great city and all the work that Charles Drew has done and will do in the future. And for Ms. Raquel Robinson, another one. So, get some space on the wall at the conservatory for a plaque recognizing the work of you, your connection with Howard University, and your gift to our city. Thank you all so much.
Mr. Harris-Dawson, we have a member on the queue.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Thank you, Madam President. Councilman Harris-Dawson, thank you again for bringing HBCU Recognition Day to City Council. So excited to both of you awardees. They both have, they've been angels in our city, and we appreciate the unique contribution that you each have made. And we appreciate the unique contribution that HBCUs have made, you know, in our country. I unfortunately was not able to attend one, but I was accepted at Howard. So, that counts for something. But literally, tens of thousands of individuals who graduated at the undergrad level and at the grad level have just made a difference internationally, certainly in our country, and proud to say right here in LA. And so, again, thank you, those of you that attended HBCUs. We know we always have to just always highlight the importance. Even President Trump referenced the HBCUs in his State of the Union address. Whether he follows through is another story, but he did get it out there. So, again, we just thank HBCUs for the unique contribution that you have made and that you continue to make. And to our awardees this morning, too, just congratulations. Keep up the good work, and we love you both. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Back to you, Mr. Harris-Dawson.
Thank you. Pardon me? Back to you.
Back to you.
Oh, we're done. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to go take some pictures.
Madam Clerk, let's vote on reconsideration of item number two. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That item is now before us. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote. Okay, Mr. Kerkorian, are you ready for your presentation, sir?
Thank you very much, Madam President. Members, if you are watching the news these days, you know that the world's attention has been riveted by the global spread of the coronavirus. And whenever there is an outbreak of an epidemic, of course, we pay a great deal of attention to that. And when there are diseases that have large numbers of people who have fallen victim to them, a great amount of resources is devoted to that. Resources for prevention, resources for medications, for cures. But now imagine that you have a family member who is affected by a life-altering or even life-threatening disease, but there are only hundreds, perhaps, of other people who have that disease. These are the kinds of rare diseases, and there are thousands of them, that the drug companies too often ignore, that physicians don't learn about in medical school, that there aren't screening tests for infants when they're born. And so, that's why it's important that we pause and recognize some of the diseases that don't get quite so much attention so that we can help to bring resources to bear in addressing them. I'm joined today by Misak Zetian, who I met for the first time 14 years ago, and actually, he met his wife on my 2006 campaign for the State Assembly. And he and his wife have a son, Adam, who is impacted by congenital disorders of glycosylation. I get that right?
Yes.
And there are only 1,000 people in the world who have this disease. And so, imagine as a family member trying to go to find a physician who can address this, trying to find a course of treatment that will help your loved one address this challenge. And there are thousands and thousands of these diseases. In the United States, a rare disease is considered, is one that has fewer than 200,000 individuals that are impacted. And there are more than 7,000 such diseases that affect 30 million people in the United States and their families. Children are disproportionately impacted by rare disease, and far too often, 30% of the time, children with rare diseases don't live to see their fifth birthday because of lack of treatment, lack of investment in medication, and so on. The average time it takes for a patient with a rare disease to receive an accurate diagnosis is almost five years. Imagine struggling with symptoms for five years and you keep going to physicians and having them say, "Well, we did another test. It's not that. We did another test. It's not that," and not having the answers that you need. So, the lack of access to effective treatments and difficulty in obtaining reimbursement from insurers for life-altering and even life-saving treatments remain significant challenges for people with rare diseases and their families. And these diseases include, as I mentioned, congenital disorders of glycosylation, Macardle disease, Ehlers-Danlos syndrome, acoustic neuroma, Paget disease, Landau-Clefner syndrome, necrotizing fasciitis, Rasmus and encephalitis, mucopolysaccharidosis type 1, San Felipe syndrome, and many others. So, in order to bring attention to some of these diseases, people who are impacted by them and their families have come together and unified to recognize Rare Disease Day. And I think when it originally started, it was set on February 29th each year because February 29th is a rare day. And so, it's a good day to recognize things that are rare. But this year, it started in the United States in 2009 and is now observed in more than 90 countries around the world. So, here in Los Angeles, we have this opportunity on leap year to recognize Rare Disease Day on February 29th, 2020. And so, I'm pleased to be able to introduce or to present this resolution that recognizes February 29th, 2020 as Rare Disease Day. Misak, did you want to say?
No, I'm okay.
No? Okay. So, thank you, colleagues. And with that, oh.
We have one member on the queue, Mr. Korretz.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to speak because I had the fortunately modest misfortune of my daughter falling victim to one of these rare diseases, or actually, two of them at the same time. Guillain-Barre syndrome, which I believe affects one out of every 50,000 to 100,000 people, and a sister disease called CIDP, which affects around one out of a million people. And her symptoms were sort of a hybrid of the two, which is probably even rarer. It's difficult because progress is made slowly, although some progress has been made because who's going to focus on studying a disease that affects one out of a million people? There's so little training on CIDP and awareness of it that we actually diagnosed someone that we knew who was having symptoms for a couple of months, and nobody else recognized what he had. It's such a rarity, and if there can be more focus on the rare diseases, we can make some significant progress for the more modest number of people that have them, but they are no less important and no less devastating to those folks. My daughter was paralyzed at Children's Hospital for around three months, and the work that's been done on these diseases over the years had identified several treatments, one of which helped in one way, and then a combination helped in another way, and she made a remarkable full recovery. But it's so important, and I thank you for, Mr. Kerkorian, for recognizing this and for all of your good work in this arena and others that are willing to spend the time to help people with these rare diseases. Thank you.
Back to you, Mr. Kerkorian.
Thank you very much, Madam President. And I should mention that Misak and his family also created a foundation to help assist people who have rare diseases as well. And so, it's my great pleasure to recognize him for his work and also to declare Rare Disease Day, February 29th, 2020, in the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you, Mr. Kerkorian. Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and move on to multiple speaker cards. If I call your name, please come on up. Patricia McAllister, followed by Eric Previn and Lynn Moses. Ms. McAllister, you're speaking, item 23 and 24, and general public comment.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. 23 and 24. Now, item number 23, you want to take $50,000 from the redevelopment project and put it in the overtime category for police. Whereas I mentioned earlier this week, police, they have a $1.5 trillion budget. Now, you're taking this money out of redevelopment projects when that money should be used for toilets, okay? So, the police are also monitoring communities. They want this overtime because if they, you know, people are urinating and defecating, you know, loosening their bows on people's business steps and things of that nature. So, this money should not be going to police overtime. Get it out of their budget. Now, Mayor Garcetti was interviewed yesterday, and we were told that there are only 14 toilets in the city, with 75,000 homeless people, 14 toilets. And Garcetti said, "We need money." No, we don't need money. We've got money right in this budget. We need toilets. Now, this is my suggestion. Every district, you got money. Every district is responsible for putting at least 30 toilets in their district.
Ms. McAllister, this is.
I'm talking about, this is the police budget I'm talking about. Don't end the.
Ms. McAllister, that's not related to item 23.
Number 24, Korretz. No, this is about the Pico Boulevard. Again, we should use money instead of buying signs for street parades in that district, District Five, buy some toilets. I don't think the city should go all out, the city itself, in the general fund. I think each district should be responsible for about 30 toilets. How in the heck are you going to have 14 toilets and 70,000 homeless people? See, I'm counting the people in their cars, too. There are about 40,000 on the street with people in their cars. You guys got to be held responsible. Now, my public comment, the street vendors, we've got this coronavirus, they must obey the laws. I see some of these stands are so nasty, I don't know how they're serving food. They must obey the law. Now, if they're here today, they know the law, but they have to obey to get tickets and everything else like everybody else. If we don't do right as citizens, we get tickets. Now, the charter, the charter, the city's charter, section 260, states that we can change the charter. Korretz, K-O-R-E-T-Z, wants to be the controller. He wants to handle our money. He has a degree in history. Okay, no good. We can do it. We can change it. The council can change it or the mayor to make this a salary position, or we can put an initiative on the ballot, and I would go with that, too. Okay, also, I don't know if people know, but when those illegal aliens stormed our border last year by the thousands, the Democrats set up some rules and laws where we had to let 375,000 into this city. Yes, and that's why we got all these homeless people.
Thank you, Ms. McAllister, your time. Is that Mr. Eric Previn? You want to come on up? Thank you. Mr. Previn, followed by Lynn Moses and Arnold Sacks. Mr. Previn, you sign up to speak on items 23 and 24 in general public comment.
And the continuation, item 25, as well. Thank you. It's Eric Previn from Studio City.
That was a comment for 25.
But you've got a substitute motion on the board.
23 and 24, Mr. Previn.
Okay, so you're substituting motions and you can't make a comment? That's how you want to do it? Fine. You know, this place is just getting increasingly hard to deal with. No, I'm going to keep going.
So, Mr. Previn, no, we're holding your time. Those are non-substantial changes. We don't have to reopen public comment. You're limited to 23 and 24. Thank you.
Yeah, I disagree with that, obviously. And the Pic of Pico was one that Korretz pushed through. It's a little street fair, just like Taste of Soul. And again, I think that the public enjoys a little of this, but, you know, the problem is that this is sort of like incumbents smearing around. And then, what it does is it has an impact on the community that causes people not to want to have a dialogue during election time, like now. We've had several forums, and the incumbent doesn't want to show up and talk about or defend his record. He just wants to collect public matching money, which is disgusting, frankly, because these are folks who are raising, you know, hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars, and yet, none of the challengers are getting any of the matching money. And so, these little events like Taste of Soul and the other ones where they bring in all the incumbents and make it feel like a big, warm festival is, in fact, kind of a, you know, it should not be happening during election time, and it should not be off-election just so that it's all done by election time. It's just disappointing. Now, Mr. Lee is doing an outstanding job, I have to admit, of pushing LAPD, you know, community development money and money for community services right out the door to the LAPD overtime fund. Now, this is a time-honored tradition in CD-12, which is why there is a hotly contested race in CD-12. There's a woman named Lorraine Lundquist who's challenging him. She is not against police protection, but I just think that this is like a classic election play. He learned it from the great Greg Smith and the Mitch Englander and, I guess, Mr. Bernsen, whose daughter now is over at Office of Finance cutting deals for the folks out there. It's not really what the public wants. It's what they want to do, and there's lots of examples, which I've been educating this room about, you know, ways that the incumbents turn. Like, for example, having Tiffany Haddish, who everybody thinks is hilarious, down here, instead of showing up at forums in his community, Herb Wesson has pulled a coup. It's like, I've got a celebrity quasi endorsement.
Can you, one minute of general public comment?
Did you put your foot on the microphone? Oh, okay. That's a nice trick. I'll get to that in a minute. Thanks. So, my general public comment is the public matching fund. Mr. Bonin, you could sit up for this one if you like. You guys made a great plan to lower the threshold down to 11,000. So, how's it going? Paul Kerkorian has started feeding in the matching fund. John Lee's about to. You are, Nury Martinez, I assume, because you've signed up and you've raised enough money, and there's no doubt. And then, the people who are not doing And then the people who are not doing it include Mark Ridley Thomas, who's already raised over $600,000, and Kevin DeLeon. So what about other, you know, challengers? Well, you've got Levy and Ramon from the richest district. You've got Vasquez and you from CD-10 who've raised, they're going to get the 150. But this is public money, and none of the grassroots challengers. In fact, Marquise Harris Dawson, here on Black History Month, didn't get a single challenger, even though there were dozens who were trying, because they couldn't get over the hurdle that you created with the city clerk's office this time. This time, instead of 5% of the people not making it, 35% of the candidates didn't make it on signature. And all the money is going to the incumbent.
Your next speaker, Mr. Lynn Moses, followed by Arnold Sacks, Mike Greenspan, and Antonio Mr. Moses, you're speaking on items 23, 24, and your general public comment.
Thank you very much. Good morning. In my universe, 1.2 billion divided by 550,000 equals 2,181, Mr. Farrell. Item number 23, $50,000 for overtime for police officers being diverted. This city, half the budget of this city goes to the Los Angeles Police Department. That in itself is a breakdown in humanity. To oppress, to oppress people, basically. But the system is finally realizing that you don't make money, you don't develop anything by oppressing people. So this $50,000 should stay where it is, in my opinion. Installing street banners at Pic Pico Fair to enhance business on Pico Boulevard. Well, that's a good idea, unlike the Destination Crenshaw Black Business Destruction Gentrification Project of sleazy, marqueasy Dawson.
Mr. Moses, you've got to get back on the.
I am talking about the topic. I'm giving an example. These are my words with my mind. Do not interrupt. Sit there and be quiet, please. Thank you.
No, sir. I need to direct you back to the.
I am on my comment. Thank you. Enhance the business of Pico Boulevard. There's nothing wrong with that. There is something wrong with sleazy Dawson.
Now you have your one minute of general public comment.
To my, best of my knowledge, Ms. Martinez, you have not apologized to Ms. Autry for your disrespect to her on, I think it was December 11th. Let's see if you get around to it, ma'am. Thank you. By the way, let's name Homeless Day. The homeless aren't even mentioned in this chamber anymore. Let's name Herb Wesson's birthday as Homeless Day. I don't see him giving away any dogs anymore. We don't have any dog homes. A disgrace. Total, complete disgrace. Sleazy, marqueasy Dawson, trying to take the 5401 unemployment office when his area is the highest unemployment area in the city.
Thank you, Mr. Moses. Next speaker is Arnold Sacks, followed by Mike Greenspan and Antonio Ramirez.
Brown Act violation you have to answer to.
Thank you very much. Just hand it over to the sergeant. Mr. Sacks, you're speaking on items 23 and 24, your general public comment.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. And I was over at Board of Public Works, and I told somebody that the reason I come to a lot of these meetings and go to a lot of different committee meetings is so I can learn how government runs, because you can't learn really how government runs unless you learn from experts. So you come to city council and you learn from experts. What do you learn, though? That's what's important. You learn that language is important. So item 23 refers to additional police resources. Now, some people are saying it's overtime. It could very well be overtime. But maybe, maybe the police could partner with Hollywood. You know, when Hollywood does these shoots around the city, they have, and we heard somebody talk about toilets, and I've mentioned using council district funds that are available throughout the council districts, AB 1290, bus bench revenue, pipeline revenue, 10, 15 different sources. But maybe they could partner with Hollywood and use those resources in Devonshire to get some of those trailers that they use, mobile toilets. There's like three toilets on a trailer.
So I think we're off of the topic. Could you get back on, please?
Mr. City Attorney, language. Play attention, please. I'm talking about a use for that language.
Mr. Sacks, get back on the topics you're hanging up to speak on.
Police, it says police resources. Police resources. Some people say it's overtime. Could be something else. Could it not be something else? Could be something else. My suggestion is use it, partner with Hollywood, and get some toilets that are mobile, and that would solve a problem. Yeah, it's hard to be homeless on the streets when you can't find any place to take a crap.
Again, we're off topic.
Now we are. You're the expert on being off topic, because you're off topic. So, I really appreciate the presentations.
Your one minute of general public comment.
But again, it comes down to the language. So, and I appreciate the fact that you're honoring Charles Drew University.
Hello, Michael.
Hello, hello. You're honoring Charles Drew University, and it was mentioned that there's Martin Luther King Hospital. But it used to be a trauma center until it closed in 2008. And why did it close? Because it couldn't pass federal accreditation. So now it's become a medical center without the trauma unit, and it's under state control, more or less. There's no federal funding coming in. It's really important to understand the difference. And when the gentleman was doing his practice in the 40s, there was baseball players, great African-American baseball players, Jackie Robinson, Turner, a few others. They played in the Negro League. So we have a Negro League, and we have black Americans, and we have African-Americans. I'm somewhat confused.
Thank you. Next speaker, Mike Greenspan. Are you here, Mike? Mike's not in the room. Ms. Ramirez, you're speaking on items 23 and 24, your general public comment.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, yes, I do believe that funding is absolutely needed, additional. We need additional police, and we need more resources for the police department, all of the police departments. These officers have been traumatized by the niggers, the gangbangers, the wetbacks, and all the criminal junkies and the homeless. We need funding. These individuals have been under the gun for the last, after the death of, God bless, Chief Daryl Gates. These officers have been traumatized, assaulted, beaten, attacked, and robbed, and no one has ever stood for them, until hopefully now. But we need to do something for these officers, not only provide them with more additional resources and funding, but we need to have them walk in triple or in a group, a posse in every neighborhood, because the gangs are out there. The epidemic of gang intrusion and invasion is epidemic. We need to do something now. We need to build up our LAPD and provide more funding and provide them with everything, every arsenal, bazookas, grenade launchers, and let the motherfuckers shoot the motherfucking niggas.
Please, don't shout, Ms. Ramirez.
Ms. Ramirez, please don't shout into the microphone.
Number 24, relative to street banner, are we kidding? We are not here to put street banners to promote more fraud, waste, abuse, corruption, and criminal racketeering by these elite, satanic Zionist Jew Freemason assholes, which is their side of the area. They want more, obviously, businesses are curtailed. Why? Because the fucking Jews are thieves. The elite, satanic Zionist Jews are robbing people blindly. They run.
Quiet, Ms. Ramirez. Please don't shout into the.
Oh, excuse me. Thank you, Favela. What would I do without you? Having said that, ladies and gentlemen, we, everyone knows that the elite, satanic Zionist Jews control everything, all the criminal monopolies. They own it, they run it, and they got their foot patrol soldiers, the wetbacks and the gangbangers and the niggers.
I think we're off topic, Ms. Ramirez.
Let's move on to your general public comments, Ms. Ramirez. You're not even on topic.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, yesterday after I left the city hall, I went to look for a fucking toilet. I had to spend $8 in Little Tokyo to use a toilet. Here, we're sending billions of dollars to fucking Israel, and why are we sending money to Israel when we can't even get a fucking toilet for the homeless women, homeless men, and homeless military veterans, and homeless people? And fuck all the homeless criminal assholes, because 90% of them are criminal assholes. They're filthy, they're nasty, and they're dirty. But ladies and gentlemen, we need toilets. We need a place to sit down. Let's have some goddamn civility in LA. Are we that much of a pigs under the Democrat regime? Are you a bunch of pigs? Don't you have any human dignity? I mean, to carry a fucking cup and put it under your ass so you can urinate and cover yourself? That is so humiliating and embarrassing, and yet I carry my bleach just to disinfect my area everywhere I go. And you wonder why I carry a shopping cart? Because the motherfucking Jews took everything from me, and we're spending all the millions to fucking Israel. Start the money to Israel and bring us toilets. God bless America.
Ms. Ramirez, your time is up. Thank you very much. Is Mike Greenspan in the room? He's not in the room, so I'm going to go ahead and close multiple speaker cards for today's meeting. Let's go ahead and move on to items, item 25. Do you have an announcement to make on this item, Mr. City Attorney?
Madam President, a substitute motion has been posted and circulated for this item, so two votes are required.
Go ahead and vote to substitute. Let's open the roll. Close the row and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, that item is now before us. Let's open the roll. Close the row and tabulate the vote. Let's go ahead and vote on items 23 and 24. Let's open the roll. Close the row and tabulate the vote. Okay, let's move on to items 3, 4, and 5. Mr. Koretz, you call these three items special, sir?
And for the record, Madam President, a substitute motion has been posted and circulated on item number 5.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Koretz.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you for hearing these items today. I also want to thank actor Joaquin Phoenix, who is here in support of this item, and give him a shout out. He's actually just getting here.
Academy Award winner.
Yes, and we congratulate him on his recent Academy Award. Given how destructive all our recent wildfires have been in the last few years, the Woolsey Fire, the Skirball, the Getty Fire, the Saddle Ridge Fire, and others, one of the most alarming things that are happening is what's happening in the Amazon Rainforest in Brazil. They are purposely burning it down, and they are murdering indigenous people who are present there and who are fighting to protect it. What's most disturbing is that it's being done with the express consent and encouragement of the Brazilian government, led by President Bolsonaro. And so when Councilmember Ru and I introduced this motion in November, we did it with partnership, in partnership with New York City council members, with a goal that other cities would join us once the two largest cities in the country had taken this action. We succeeded even better than we had hoped, because legislation has also been introduced by Assemblymember Calra, AB 2002, which aims to get the whole state to join this effort. We need to change the way the city spends its money to let the Brazilian government and the companies that are complicit with this terrible action know that the Amazon Rainforest is an international treasure that creates oxygen, is known as the lungs of the world, that it drives healthy weather systems, supports life and biodiversity that is essential for the whole world. And so I've introduced an amending resolution for item 5, because there's been a state bill introduced in the past few weeks that I just referenced, which matches our resolution, and asks for, and the CLA suggested, we clarify specific support for it as well. I also want to suggest that we take a closer look at AB 2002 on the report-back item on item 3. Since they've already done a deeper dive than we have, we may be able to help save some staff time and keep from duplicating work, and also make our legislation stronger. So the city's long used its purchasing power as a tool to influence policies in other regions. I think there's never been an issue more compelling in terms of the future of the planet than this one. We can't just allow continued plundering of our world's natural resources, and this is the most destructive thing happening anywhere in the world, and this gives us a chance to help save our planet. So I ask you all for your aye votes.
Thank you, Mr. Koretz. Mr. Kerkorian.
Thank you, Madam President, and I just want to thank Councilmember Koretz and Mr. Phoenix for your work in this area. The especially tragic part about the destruction of the Amazon Rainforest is the almost uselessness of the things that are produced by it. Very often, this deforestation is done to create palm plantations, to create palm oil, which is almost never needed, except in junk food and things like that that we consume massively. And so I think bringing attention to the deforestation and why it's being done by profiteers who are producing these products that we don't need in the first place, and destroying species that don't exist anywhere in the world, products that don't exist anywhere else in the world, things that are used in medications that are vital, lifesaving medications that are found only in the Amazon Rainforest and nowhere else in the world. It's really ludicrous that the world could allow this to happen. So I just wanted to add to this, colleagues, that this effort to examine our policies and procedures with regard to our own procurement of these products is going to be part of a broader report that will come back to the council about sustainable procurement practices generally. The city is taking a very deep dive now in examining how we can use our procurement power to achieve sustainability ends in a broad array of areas, and this is one of the most vital ones that I can imagine. So thank you, Mr. Kretz, and thank you, Mr. Phoenix. Ask for your aye vote.
Thank you, Mr. Kerkorian. Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Kerkorian, for your comments. Thank you, Mr. Kretz, for this legislation, as always, sort of on the point of the spear on environmental matters and on combating the climate catastrophe. Thank you, Mr. Phoenix, of course, for your work. Obviously, very, very supportive of this. Wanted to rise, though, to make the additional point, that when we talk about the destruction of the Amazon Rainforest, we also need to keep in mind the local impacts of the destructions of the forests here in California. The wildfires and the forest fires that this state suffered in just the past few months, the impact to our climate from those, just in one year, eradicates any gains we have made through the additional emission standards we have here in California. And I am absolutely supportive of everything in these motions, but it just underscores the importance of thinking globally and acting locally, is we need to be doing a hell of a lot more here in California, and I'm glad this is a council that has been pushing very aggressively to move us to 100% at DWP, and, you know, hopefully, we will do more to crack down on the fossil fuel industry with legislative. with legislation that will create a buffer zone around oil drilling in a few months.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bonin. There are no more members on the queue. Let's go ahead and vote on items three and four. Let's open the roll. Close the row and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Let's vote on item number five. Let's vote on the substitute motion. Let's open the roll. Close the row and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, that item is now before us. Let's open the roll. Close the row and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those items pass. Congratulations, Mr. Coetz. Let's move on to general public comment. If I call your name, please come on up. You will have one minute to speak. Marco Juarez. Followed by Tomas Torres. Tomas Torres, are you here? You want to come on up?
Good morning. My name is Marco Juarez. I'm calling again from Banais. Complaining about Los Angeles Housing Community Management Department, especially Letitia Bay with a case number BA 250471. She refused to help us. Since 2001, I've been filing complaints and complaints. Mr. City Attorney, I've been filing the complaints. Nobody wants to do nothing. I've been harassed, intimidated, retaliated, especially Evelyn Araujo. She make threats. Now my cars and my SUV is being vandalized. So I've been joining LA tenants' union now to start making more protests and start looking since Mr. Port Gakkorian's office decides to help criminals and gun members. Many times, I complain at his office. Nothing is being done. So who can help low-income families, disabled Hispanic tenants, remove all public servants refusing to do their job? That's very shame on you, all of you. Noorie Martinez, no your president. All this, why you keep protecting criminal management companies and landlord landlords? Remove public servants. Jermaine Mendoza and Mariana Diaz, they working together.
Thank you very much, sir. Sir, just give me a second while I'll call a couple more speakers. Denise Nunez, are you here? You want to come on up? If I call your name, I need you to come up, please. Jason Malenfent, come on up. Brianna Jordan. Brianna Jordan, are you here? Come on up. And Bob Guzman? Come on up. Go ahead, sir. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Dr. Tomas Torres, Executive Director for the American Academy of Pediatrics in Southern California. I represent 1,500 pediatricians. We are part of LA Families Fighting Flavored Tobacco. Flavors are trapping youth into nicotine addiction, and we support a strong ordinance to prohibit the sale of all flavored tobacco, including menthol. Anything less is a big mistake that perpetuates the lethal effects of menthol, especially in the African-American community. I received a call last week from a school district superintendent who doesn't know what to do with kids who are addicted to nicotine. It takes courage to stand for what's right, and you can either stand for the lives at risk or stand to defend the industry. Allowing the exception of menthol is not about consumer rights. It's about practicing and protecting and siding with the tobacco industry. Please stand for the lives of Angelenos and end the sales of flavored tobacco, including menthol. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Denise Nunez, and I'm a pediatrician and physician at UCLA. And I'm also part of the LA Tobacco Families Fighting for Flavored Tobacco. And I'm thankful for your time and your attention for this matter. The recommendations from the committee were to ban flavored tobacco, but that does not include menthol. And menthol is the number-one flavored product sold by the tobacco industry. So as a physician and a representative of the health of our community, I strongly advocate that you all consider all products that are flavored tobacco. They are really, especially for menthol, targeted to vulnerable communities, and therefore, we should include menthol in that ban. Thank you very much.
Next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Dr. Jason Malafon. I'm an internal medicine and preventive medicine physician at UCLA and also a member of LA Families Fighting Flavored Tobacco, as well as a resident District 11. I'm speaking to urge you and your colleagues to act now to end the sale of flavored tobacco in Los Angeles. Please support the introduction and passage of a comprehensive ordinance that ends the sale of flavored tobacco that includes menthol-flavored tobacco products and without any exemptions like hookah. The recommendation from the committee exempts menthol tobacco products. This is a mistake that only places specific communities at risk. Here are the facts that we know. Menthol is the industry's number-one flavor for both combustible and e-cigarette use. The tobacco industry specifically targets menthol advertising at young people in our community. The NIH recently released a study that four to five youth using tobacco use flavored products. And out of the young people who smoke, fifty-seven percent are smoking menthols. This is a direct outcome of tobacco industry marketing. You can protect our young people. We urge you to end the sale of menthol tobacco products. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Next speaker. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Brianna Jordan, and I'm a youth organizer with United Parents and Students. I represent hundreds of students from the districts of council members Harris Dawson, Price, Bonin, and Wizar. Our students have spent months organizing and advocating to end the sale of flavored tobacco products in their communities, and they were so proud when LA County passed a comprehensive flavor ban. They knew that their concerns had been seen, heard, and most importantly, honored. Now, as you all work to develop the ordinance that will end the sale of flavored tobacco products in the city, I urge you to include mint and menthol products in this ban. We know that mint and menthol are among the most addictive flavors, and that the use of this flavor disproportionately impacts the black community. To end the sale of flavored tobacco products on all products except mint and menthol would be to close the front door and open the back to a new generation of youth smokers. Secure their futures and pass a comprehensive ban. Set an example for our youth, our surrounding cities, and the state of California. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you Bob Guzman?
Yes, I am.
Hold on for just a second. Let me call a couple more speakers. Vicky Vaughn, are you here? Vicky, come on up. Yvette Vivanco? Yvette Vivanco? Yvette Diaz? Naomi Rodriguez? Come on up. Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
Hello. My name is Bob Guzman. I'm here on behalf of United Parents and Students, and I'm a member of LA Families Fighting Flavored Tobacco. I work at five schools within the county of Los Angeles, three of them within the city of Los Angeles. And at every one of the schools, we are on the front line of students as young as middle school smoking e-cigarettes in the bathroom. We are seeing this grow exponentially year by year. I urge the city council to adopt an ordinance, a comprehensive ordinance, that will ban the sale of flavored tobacco products, including the flavored of mint and menthol. We know that closing down all flavors but leaving mint and menthol open for our youth to smoke is a huge mistake and only playing into the hands of the big tobacco companies. Please, please, adopt an ordinance to ban the sale of flavored tobacco products, including mint and menthol. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker. Good morning.
Hello. My name is Vicky Vaughn, and I am a United Parents and Student Leader. I am here today because I have a concern for the sale and the use of menthol-flavored tobacco products in our community. I am calling for you and your colleagues to end the sale of all flavored tobacco products in Los Angeles, including menthol-flavored products. This is something that is very personal to me because of my past history of tobacco use. I know that this product targets the black community. When I started using tobacco, one of the reasons that I started to use flavored tobacco was because it was popular and because of the menthol flavor. I urge you to consider the negative and lifelong effects of this product that it has on our young people. Our young people especially are being targeted. Ending the sale of all forms of flavored tobacco products, including menthol and hookah products, means that potentially, many young lives can be saved, and I thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Good morning. My name's Yvette Diaz, and I'm also a community organizer with United Parents and Students. Menthol is the industry's number-one flavor for both combustible and e-cigarette use. Menthol products should not be excluded from the tobacco policies. The tobacco industry targets menthol advertising at young people, a practice that has been perfected through the decades of practice by targeting the African-American community in particular. Of young people, twelve- to seventeen-year-olds who smoke, fifty percent of them are menthol-flavored. This is a direct outcome of tobacco industry marketing. You can protect our young people, especially our students, and the sale of menthol tobacco products. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning, council members. My name is Naomi Rodriguez, and I'm a parent and student in Los Angeles. As a mother of two teenage boys, flavored tobacco products are a huge concern for me. I know these products are marketed to teens and that my children are at a special risk. For members, you can do something about this issue. You can act to protect our youth. I urge you pass flavored tobacco banned and included mint and menthol products in ban. As we know, these flavors are some of the most popular. We are counting on your act. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you give me just a second? Let me call a couple more speakers. Terri Tucker. Gabby Seaworth. Christina Ruggles. Christina Ruggles, are you here? Aureliano Santiago? And Miguel Perez. Are you Yvette?
Yes, I am.
Good morning. Go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Yvette Vivanco, and I come with Friends of the Family. We are a nonprofit agency based in North Hills. We assist many of the families in the community, and we've been talking about a motion that Councilmember Lee is trying to propose that will criminalize street vendors. We're asking to please consider that the families that we're serving are looking to make ends meet by joining the formal economy. By selling on the street, it will help them feed their families. It would help them pay rent, and criminalizing would just make it a little bit more harder for them to make ends meet. Some of the families that we assist that are trying to make a business, it's because they are unable to work because of their legal status. So we assist them with educating them, telling them about the laws and regulations, as well as assisting them with their ITIN application assistance and their business permits. Like I said, many of these families are just trying to make ends meet. So criminalizing them would just make it extremely hard for them. It would actually... It would just make it terrible for their families, and it would just put them at risk.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Terri Tucker. I'm with Parents and Students United. I wanted to urge you to ban the menthol and mint. It's a belief that if this happens, that it's going to target African-Americans and make a higher increase in incarceration and things like that. However, when we think about it, forty thousand... There's more than forty thousand African-Americans that are dying from smoking tobacco things. However, when I think about the way that tobacco works, and our children are attracted to the menthol flavor, and they make these decisions before their brain is fully developed, they often are hooked before they are an adult to make informed decisions. It affects me, because my grandfather, who was a Rockwell engineer, died of emphysema. My father has had cancer, and my father-in-law died of cancer. They all chose to smoke that menthol flavor before they were fully developed.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am, I'm sorry. The next speaker, are you Gabby?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Gabrielle Seaworth, and I also work for United Parents and Students, working to address barriers to education outside of school walls. I work at Animo Pat Brown High School and Animo Florence Firestone Middle School, where students have worked to raise awareness around the dangers of vaping flavored products. Students couldn't be with us here today because they're in school, but they choose to organize around this issue because of how they have seen their peers become addicted and seen the rise in tobacco products in their schools. And I also hear from parents frequently who tell me about their concerns about their children becoming addicted to vape and tobacco products, and their worries about how this not only affects their long-term health, but also their current education. So I urge you today to do something about this issue and work to pass a ban on flavored tobacco products that includes mint and menthol, and help to close the door on big tobacco and keep our students safe and healthy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Buenos dias, señores concejales.
One momentito. Necesita traductor?
Si.
Un momentito. Usted es Aureliano Santiago?
Miguel Ángel Pérez.
Okay. Can you start this time again?
Buenos dias, señores concejales.
Good morning, council members.
Mi nombre es Miguel Ángel Pérez.
My name is Miguel Ángel Pérez.
Trabajo como vendedor ambulante en Exposition Park.
I work as a street vendor in Exposition Park.
Me sentí feliz cuando la ciudad decidió discriminizar la venta.
I was happy when the city discriminated everything.
Legalizar la venta ambulante hace años.
For the street vendors. Many years ago.
Sin embargo, la ciudad pasó una resolución.
However, the city passed a resolution.
Para tener más herramientas de enforamiento.
To have more tools of enforcement.
Nos preocupa que nos quieran criminalizar otra vez.
We are worried that this is going to be a criminal against us.
Estoy trabajando duro para cumplir las reglas.
I am working hard to comply with the rules.
Y regulaciones.
And regulate?
Y seguir mis permisos.
And being able to get my permits.
Sé que muchos de mis compañeros vendedores están trabajando para hacer lo mismo.
I know that many of my partners in the street vending are working towards the same goal.
Necesitamos más dinero para educación.
We need more money for education.
Para orientación.
For orientation.
Y facilitación de préstamo.
And to make it easy to get a...
Señores concejales.
Council members.
Les pedimos que paren el ataque y la discriminación hacia los vendedores.
We ask that you stop the attacks and the criminalizations towards the vendors.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Les tengo estas hojas para cada uno de ustedes, señores concejales. Esperamos que lo...
I have these sheets for you.
Gracias. Are you Christina?
I am.
Go ahead.
Hi, good morning. Thank you for your time. My name is Christina Ruggles, and I am a street vendor in the area of Hollywood. Me and my colleagues are looking for a way to vend in the area legally. We've been informed that carts where we would sell our items are probably going to be costing fifteen to thirty-five thousand dollars, and that's a tremendous cost, and that's only the cart itself. I would not know where to start seeking for loans or that. Also, at the same time, we're looking at costs of where to obtain food handling permits in order for us to be educated and know the regulations on what food handling entails. And we're looking at classes both offered in English and in Spanish. So that's an additional cost, too. And we're also looking at commissary expenses. So that, I'm just guessing here, it would be about six thousand dollars per year in order to have a commissary. My question just is for the city to take notice of us vendors and to provide some support.
Thank you. Usted es Aureliano? Un momentito. Déjeme llamar a más personas. Marta Ávila? Marta? Natalia García? Harriet Elliott? Harriet Elliott, are you here? Rosa Miranda? Abraham Farley Jr.? Abraham Farley Jr., are you here? And Arabi Hassan? Porque señor Santiago, un momentito. Necesita traductor?
Señores concejales, muy buenos días.
Council members, good morning.
Mi nombre es Aureliano Santiago.
My name is Aureliano Santiago.
Soy vendedor por veintisiete años.
I've been a vendor for twenty-seven years.
En la calle Alvarado y Wilshire.
And Wilshire and Alvarado.
Señores, estoy acá hoy.
I am here today.
Para saber por qué es que nos empiezan a discriminar otra vez.
Why are you making this a criminal matter again?
Estamos volviendo como años atrás con los policías.
We are returning like in earlier years with the police.
Los inspectores que han mandado en Alvarado.
The inspectors that you have sent on Alvarado.
No nos han dado ninguna información sobre las nuevas reglas.
They have not given us any information regarding the new rules.
Lo único que han hecho es repartir flyers.
All they have done is give out flyers.
Como cualquier negocio.
Like any other business.
Necesitamos información.
We need information.
Sobre las reglas, a dónde nos podemos poner a trabajar y a dónde no.
According to the rules, so to know where we can work and not to work.
Lo único que hacen los oficiales es correrlos de este lugar, moverlos a otro lado.
The only thing that police officers do is move us from those spots to other spots.
Pero no nos informan exactamente cuál debe ser y a dónde debemos estar.
But they don't give us the exact information that we need, where to be and where not to be.
Señores, ya nos empiezan a pedir los permisos.
They are asking us for our permits.
Nosotros estamos dispuestos a pagar.
We are willing to pay.
Pero que nos dejen trabajar.
But let us work.
Gracias, que tengan un buen día.
Thank you. Have a lovely day.
Next speaker. Marta Ávila? Necesita traductor?
Si.
Okay.
Mi nombre es Marta Ávila.
My name is Marta Ávila.
Y vendo en el valle, en la calle Noro y Tobías.
And I sell in the valley in the north of, in Tobías.
Soy vendedora de tacos en pequeños pueblos.
I sell tacos in a small space. I sell tacos in a small space.
Conforme la ley SB 946.
And according to the law, SB 49, SB 946.
Me permite, mis compañeros y yo hemos tratado de seguir las reglas.
My coworkers and I have tried to follow the rules.
Como ustedes nos han puesto.
Like have you had ordered us to do.
Y hemos, por incluso mientras estamos tratando de obtener todos los permisos.
Including where you are trying to obtain all the permits that are necessary.
Me preocupa que reaccionen a la criminalización.
That we will come back to making this a criminal matter.
Luchamos mucho tiempo para que ustedes...
We are fighting -- we fought for long.
Nos apoyen.
So that you can support us.
Y hemos oído que ustedes nos están criminalizando.
And we have heard that you are making this a criminal matter again.
Otra vez regresar atrás mientras...
We are moving backwards.
Mientras ustedes son seis millones para reformar de fortamiento, mientras son seis millones.
There are six million of enforcement of...
Forma de enforzamiento que va a criminalización, y al mismo tiempo invierten ustedes cinco para...
There's going to be -- there's going to be an enforcement of six million that is going to be making a criminal matter.
Para nosotros.
Towards us.
Le pido que nos ayude.
I ask for your help.
Para que no nos criminalice.
So this will not be a criminal matter, a criminal matter.
Somos vendedores ayudando a la comunidad.
We are vendors that are helping the community.
Buenos dias.
Good morning.
Mi nombre es Natalia García.
My name is Natalia García.
Trabajo es como vendedor ambulante.
I am a street vendor.
De Los Angeles, yo soy...
Of Los Angeles.
... tercera edad y vivo.
I am an older citizen.
Impuesto limitado.
And I am limited.
Ingresos que obtengo de venta...
Everything that I make is towards my...
Ayudan para pagar.
Help me to pay.
Eh, los gastos pasan como...
My costs, my basic costs.
Los víveres y puedo pagar una -- y no puedo pagar una tarifa.
And I can't pay a tariff.
Anual muy cara.
That is too high. In order to continue to sell.
Mantener incluso la tarifa que están -- que es -- está vigente.
That is at the moment.
Es gran carga para mí.
It's hard for me to pay.
El porosque y mabaño para poder renovarla.
And next year, so I could able to renew it. If I cannot sell, then I can't pay.
El precio es demasiado alto.
And the price is very high.
Demasiado y para personas de la tercera edad.
And for older citizens.
Trabajo, un costo bajo.
There has to be a lower cost.
Para poderlo pagar.
In order to pay.
Mayores, como para mayores de la tercera edad deberían ser gratuitos.
Older citizens, it should be free or a lower price.
Gracias, señora. Muchas gracias.
Next speaker.
My name is Harriet Elliott, and I did live in Western District, probably will again. My son died 27 years ago. Why am I bringing it up now? Because his assassin is free, that they knew who his assassin is. This is Detective Tinker's statement that wasn't in the autopsy. Detective Tinker said, "Decedent," my son, and another person argued at a party. They went into the street, and the decedent sustained a gunshot wound to the chest. So they knew who this young man is. He was at a party at 10:24 at night. Now, how many kids at 10:24 at night have no alcohol in them? He had zero alcohol in him in the autopsy. Here's the -- no alcohol. I was a drinker. That's why he didn't want to drink, okay? Well, he's with his girlfriend at a party at 10:24 at night, zero alcohol. Okay, but what's missing? The missing is no one went after the assassin. Johnson, Detective Johnson said, "We don't know who the assassin is." Tinker says he knows exactly who the assassin is. The police need to be brought to bear on this.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Buenos dias, miembros de este comité.
Good morning, committee members.
Mi nombre es Rosa Miranda.
My name is Rosa Miranda.
Soy organizadora con la campaña "Legalicemos la venta ambulante" y con ICLEY Community Corporation. Esta mañana estoy aquí...
I am here today this morning.
... volviendo a hacer el llamado a ustedes.
Asking that you...
Que siguen violando el derecho...
That you are violating rights.
... a las personas hispanohablantes como yo.
To Hispanic people like me.
Para tener interpretación.
To have interpretation.
Es un -- este -- esta ciudad, este consilio debe invertir...
This city has to invest.
... en interpretación.
In interpretation.
Todo el tiempo estamos sufriendo lo mismo.
We always suffer the same.
No hay suficiente equipo...
There's not enough equipment for all the members.
Y también, en la cuestión de los permisos.
And also with the permits.
La ciudad no está invirtiendo...
The city is not investing.
... en educación.
In education.
Y están más invirtiendo en enforzamiento.
And they're investing more in enforcement.
Necesitamos que este consilio...
We need that this council...
... priorice.
Prioritize.
Apoyar a la clase trabajadora.
And support the working class.
Apoyar a mujeres.
To support women.
Apoyar a los inmigrantes.
To support immigrants.
Estamos viviendo un ambiente hostil.
We are living in an hostile environment.
Y es triste que quieran criminalizar nuevamente.
And it is sad that you want to make it a criminal matter.
Solo 350,000 para poder educar es muy poco.
350,000 for education is very low.
Necesitamos más inversión.
We need more investment.
Por favor.
Please.
Gracias. Next speaker.
Abraham Farley from the Africa Town Coalition. I want to talk about gentrification, metro, subways, and Crenshaw destination and a FIBA center.
Just get a little closer so we can hear into the mic.
So this is about metro. They don't give us, Black people shake on the jobs. We -- our representatives, Black folks ain't all canned folks. So you know, we got somebody named Sleazy Marquis Dawson, who's not even helping our community get people jobs at Metro. And we are also talking about the FIBA center, who he's trying to take away from us on Crenshaw and Slauson right there. They want to put a big Crenshaw thing where you can welcome people off the train when the Expo Line come through. So we are saying Sleazy Marquis Dawson got to go. He got his unopposed election, so he gets these fat cats, keep supporting him with his bids. So I don't give a fuck. He better just wake up and get the fuck out of office.
Thank you. Are you Arabi Hassan? Good morning. Go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Arabi Hassan, and I'm here on behalf of Breathe California of Los Angeles County, Breathe L.A. for short.
Can you speak a little closer into the mic? We can barely hear you.
Yes, this is better. Okay. Breathe L.A. for short, short, and we are an environmental health nonprofit committed to issues of air quality and lung health. Back in December, the city council's health committee pushed forward an ordinance that would ban the sale of flavored tobacco. I'm here today to strongly urge you to support ending the sale of flavored tobacco, but also to ensure that the ordinance includes menthol products. Any exemption to the ordinance would severely weaken it, and we need to make sure these products are out of the hands of our kids, right? Who would affect the most. Breathe L.A. conducts and provides educational programming all over the city and county of Los Angeles, and we have heard countless stories regarding the effects of big flavored tobacco from teachers, parents, students, and law enforcement. And big tobacco continues to push flavored products, including chocolate, strawberry, and its top product menthol, towards youth, and it causes them to become more addicted to them. So we strongly urge you to support the -- and the sale of flavored tobacco, including menthol. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes general public comment for today. There's been a request by Mr. Brummanfield to send Item 25 forthwith.